All right, well, it is what it is. All right, I'm going to call the meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. Can we start with a roll call?
James Meyer.
Norma Drummond.
Mary Seminera.
Thank you. Can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do expect our other members to join us. I think, I know, I came up the deconic tonight and there were multiple molasses on the deconic, so Rocco may have to come up that same, you know, may have to come up that same way. Oh, suddenly the microphone worked. So, and we do know Aziz is on his way as well, so there may be some confusion about the change of location. So let me start by thanking the fire district for allowing us for the use of this space. For tonight's agenda, the applicants who will come up will have the ability to sit down at the table there. Keith, if you need to use, or Brian, if you need, there's a chair here, that's the best we could do for an easel. Brian is, oh, there you are, okay. So if you need an easel, there's a chair. That's the best we could do at this point, just so you're not having to hold it. But, okay, so our upcoming meetings are going to be Tuesday, November 26th, and January 28th. There is no December meeting. The fourth Tuesday in December would be Christmas Eve, so we will not be meeting in December. So we will try to wrap up as many things as we can this evening, but some of them, you know, their first time we're seeing them, or if there are still issues, we may not be able to do that. There is going to be no action on item number seven, except for us to issue a refund because the applicant has withdrawn his application. And we do have one request. If we do ask applicants for materials, we really have to ask that you get the materials into us within two weeks of the meeting date. So again, we meet on a Tuesday, so I guess two weeks from today would be November 12th. If you can have it, because we need time to have us review it, you know, our professionals to be able to review the materials that come in. So we do ask, if we do ask you for material, extra materials, to have them in by Tuesday, November 12th. We have one set of minutes to approve, but I believe Rocco has a change, so I think I'd like to hold off adopting the minutes until, until Rocco gets here. Just, he just emailed that he has one, he had a suggested amendment to the minutes, so I want to give him an opportunity to put that on the record. So the first couple of our items on our agenda are public hearings. Some of them we've already started or held before, so they're continuations. Those are the applications that this board's already reviewed, and it's an opportunity for us to hear from the neighbors. And then after that, we have reviews, which are pretty much the first time or second time we're seeing a number of the applications, unless there are a couple that have some bigger issues that we have to deal with here. So, moving on. Item number one is an adjourned public hearing, adjourned public hearing. Appeal 3882, Klaus Garage. Dave Lawrence, owner of Klaus Garage, 2619 Route 52, Hopeful Junction, is requesting an expansion of a non-conforming use, an interpretation of automobile service facility and used car sales, as well as a variance to the 100-foot buffer requirement on Route 52 in order to continue the outside display of cars pursuant to sections 194-3, 194-16, 194-86, 194-116, and Note 11 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Fall in favor.
Aye.
Okay, so, I know, I'm, when you were here last month, we, for the benefit of the audience, the, we've been working on this application for a year now. The applicant is requesting to be able to expand the area on his property where he displays cars for sale. Cars for sale technically is not allowed use on this property. However, we are all aware of the fact that the property has been selling cars. But it is, for the most part, in all...
Prior to his ownership as well.
Yeah, exactly. No, 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 I, look, thank you for getting on the record. Prior to the current owner's ownership. What we can't exactly ascertain is the date that those cars started, or in fact, how many cars a year have been sold, because the board does have the approval, the ability to approve a 50% expansion, but we're not sure a 50% expansion of two, or whatever it is. It has to be whatever was being sold back in 1973. And according to aerial photography, it's not clear that there was a large amount of cars being sold.
Not clear that there was a large amount of cars displayed, but we don't know exactly how many cars were sold as well, so. Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. Last month, I felt like we were making a headway with this board, and so when we went back, I revised the site plan, I gave copies tonight, removed that two-foot-high display mound, and I moved the parking lot line to 50 feet from the actual property line. So we're back 50 feet, as well as the customer cars along the east side of the property we moved back as well. So, we feel that, I didn't tell how it goes up, we feel that the parking area that we're showing for 16 cars is a reasonable setback, and once it's paved, the landscape will look a lot better than what we have out there now. So, I felt at the last meeting that the board was inclined to move in this direction, so I hope that we can continue that.
Okay, our issue, at the last meeting, we did give direction for a discussion with the town planner. The town planner left a message for me late yesterday, just that she's not even sure which direction, because again, it's, we'd have to be careful that we're not setting a precedent, because it is very likely that if we allow beyond the 50% that we're allowed to do, that other owners or other business owners are likely to come in and ask for similar, in essence, ignore what the code is and just give them what they want. So that's what we have to be really careful about.
Understood, but again, as you stated early on, this has been an operation that's been going on for 40 years, 45 years, so I don't know if there's any other sites in town that would have that similar history.
What's the pleasure of the board? I mean...
He said 16 parking spots?
Yeah.
On London, I think I'm looking at the most current, I see 12. You have some in the back, which I think is also wondering why...
Is that the car sales? There's eight on each row. They're just not all filled in.
Yeah, they look at the whole panel. Well, that's for...
The car sales.
The car sales. I thought you were saying 16 is the car, and 12 then for the customers?
Well, that's the big customers' part now. I just, I just drew lines in there to show how it could be delineated, but that's where they park now, the most and most.
What we brought to Keith's attention at the last meeting was the fact that that sideline is also subject to the 100-foot buffer.
Yes, yeah.
And again, cars have been parking in there, we all know that, that's, you know, it doesn't mean that they're, it's pretty, it doesn't mean that it's, it should be, but they have been. And so Keith is making an attempt to meet his halfway and proposing that he be allowed to park cars there, because there is a need for customer parking, and so if he can start and only have a 50-foot buffer instead of the 100-foot buffer.
So, again, what I'm looking at, the customer parking is in front of, so if you're going 50 feet back, why isn't the...
That's my mistake. I erased that last parking space out.
Okay.
Did actually align with the row of cars in that little parking lot.
And, but you are proposing landscaping at the end of the rows of the customer parking, which I think will help in terms of what people are looking at.
Yes.
Because the cars for display are certainly going to be in nice, pretty shape, but the customer cars are not necessarily in the same condition.
Move up the nose.
So again, it's just, you know, it's, this is what he's proposing?
Yeah, I'm not sure there's any more information that could be received. My inclination was, if there's nobody to speak, that we would reserve decision.
Well, yeah, we have to, because we have to build in the interpretations as well of the automotive service facility and used car sales.
I understand.
Which I think we had that discussion many, many, many moons ago. It's, so, you know, again, we'll have to go back and look at some of the records to see the discussion about that.
You know, I've been living past there for a couple decades, I guess. I don't remember the cars ever being as close as he's parking them now, which, as I expressed last time, is annoying to me. It's, I'm not sure why that's happening, it still exists after we had our last meeting. I don't know if he feels like, if he does that, and now he moves back, that we're going to be more inclined to vote in favor of him, but, yeah, there are a lot of cars there. When we got, we were actually, car sales going on or not, I don't know, but the fire order certainly had cars lined up on one side that went, you know, 50, 60 feet back from the roadway, going back towards the building.
And, and he did sometimes, not, not all the time, but he did sometimes have cars, customer cars going the other side of the driveway as well, just parked face in from the driveway.
Yeah, within 20, 30 feet of the roadway, yeah.
That, I'll agree, there have been times when there have been, you know, cars there. It doesn't make it right, doesn't, you know, good for him, if business is doing well enough that, you know, he's got that many customer cars. Again, the question, it begs the question, why aren't you using more of the site further back? You know, why can't the customers' cars be further back? I think we asked that last month, too, so.
Well, I call that, if the customer parking along the side is causing a problem, that is labeled that as, that's where car, people who come in to pick up cars, to drop off cars, will be dropping the parking. It's not going to be where the cars to be repaired are lined up. Those cars that are to be repaired as part of the business in the back will be behind the split row fence and where they are now. He's got them lined up along the west side of the driveway here. So this, that row of cars is not necessarily going to be cars to be repaired.
So are you saying there's going to be more rows of cars past that fence?
Beyond that fence is where he's got cars now lined up to be repaired. That's why we're landscaping to screen the back.
So you're, so all you're showing us is a driveway and a fence with landscaping, but there's no use beyond that driveway? So even off the driveway, he is parking cars that are there for service?
He's got cars lined up along the west side of the driveway, from the back of the building to...
On the grass.
On the grass, well, yes, on the grass. This, those been...
Face in, yeah, okay.
Yeah, face in that way, from here to where the fence would have been. The proposed fence.
Like, I guess, potentially, you could have cars lined up from all the way along the west side of the driveway.
Which is sort of what he has now. The change, it changes weekly, you know, something gets rid of a bunch of cars, some empty spaces, he gets a couple cars in, you know, some weeks he's got a lot of oil changes, there's a lot of, you know, more cars, it fluctuates. But we're trying to keep that business part of the repair shop behind that fence and that screen, and the display area in front of that, so we can keep looking nice from Route 52.
So what does the customer car mean in this case? Is that people who are looking to buy one of the cars for sale?
Well, that would be someone who wants to stop in and look for a used car, or they're dropping off a car, picking up a car.
For service.
I mean, you do have more room closer to the, the one-story block building, which is would be closer for customer parking who are dropping off or picking up a car for repair. Why have you moved it so closer to Route 52?
Well, the whole point of this is to get some exposure for the used cars. 100-foot back puts that parking lot, front of the parking lot would become the back of the parking lot, and then I would have no room behind that to have cars to be serviced on.
Yes, which are...
Again, you know, again, the customer cars only that's, that you've highlighted, again, as you mentioned, that some of those cars are for the, for repairs, so if they are for repairs, why can't they move, close, move close to the repair shop?
Are you looking at...
The right, the right side of the driveway.
Right.
Again, that's also in the buffer. So why do we need those cars in the buffer?
Well, that's where, like I said, that's where, whenever my car parksters, I park my car, and they're going to go...
But, but it's awfully far from where you're actually going to drop off the keys and say, hi, I'm here, this is my car, and, you know.
Can I come up?
Yeah.
All right, can you still hear me?
Michael, do you need him to use the...
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
Okay, so, right now, there's a row of pine trees here, right? The big tall pine trees, this is Chrisbaum. In here, it's all dirt, and that's where people park their car. Employees, people coming to visit, people coming to drop or pick up a car, parking here, or here, or here. Right now, there's a line of cars from here all the way out to here, actually, that are to be, to be repaired. Somebody break jobs, somebody motors, somebody, you know, axle, whatever, in here, and you've got some back in here. What we're simply trying to do is clean up the front area, put a fence here, landscape this, have a nice display, display area for cars, and right now, if I move, if I had to go to 100 feet, A, we would lose some exposure, because then 100-foot line is right here. So I'd lose all this, and then have to put this parking lot back here, and then I have no room for the cars to be repaired.
Okay, so that's kind of the question that we were asking, is what's happening behind that fence line? And in fact, is right now, it's either cars waiting for service?
Yes.
Or it's green space for what's closer to the property lines.
This is all wanted here now.
Right.
This is all wanted here now. He's got a line of cars here, he's got some cars that spaced out back here.
So I guess, I mean, the issue is, was multi-faceted. Number one is the fact that the applicant can in fact meet the buffer requirements, he just doesn't want to, and from a business perspective, it's not the best business practice for people to not be able to see from the street what you're offering for sale. Okay? So from that perspective, and maybe from our interpretation of the used cars, that maybe we look, that he should be entitled to some variance or, you know, some, something, some leniency just because of that issue. I still don't get the customer cars, except for, you know, except for the fact that you're saying really the back of the site is being used, the business-zoned property, the whole second half of the property in the back is zoned residential. So you're totally staying out of that area. For where the cars are parked along the left side of the driveway, are you catching, is there any stormwater management in play over there? You've got cars parked on the grass? I'm just asking the question.
Yes.
Okay, just asking, because if they're parked on the grass, what is the...
I don't know.
Okay.
That'll be, that'll be determinate finding, right?
Right, that's not, we just, what's our purview?
I guess, let me ask the issue. We're looking for up to 50% expansion of what, again?
Of, of the non-conforming use, which would have been the sales of the cars, based on what the sales of the cars were, that we should be, you know, we, they search for documentation going back to the required 1973, and they can't, in essence, find any. All the best we could find was an aerial that really just showed two cars in the back.
So the assumption was that a fair number was, he sold one car a month, 10, 12 cars a year. So, 12 cars, or 11 cars, 50%, and that would be, that was the theory. So if he sold one car a month for 30 years, that's where we're coming up. I can't prove it. We looked up the DMV records, and we looked for everything that we could find, couldn't find any. So that is how we base that. I feel that's a fair number per car per month.
Definitely much better than the 25 that you were originally proposing there. I, I'm just not sure there's anything more that we can do with this application, and you're really, your only other option is to go to the town board and request a rezoning of the property.
I can't go down that road.
So, I'm not sure there's anything more that we would garner from keeping the public hearing open? I mean, I think ultimately, we have to make a decision, write a, you know, write a decision So what's the pleasure of the board?
And again, my position is that we would close the hearing and reserve decision.
If it helps this board, it makes sense if I had the applicant go out there and light up the cars as shown on this plan, so that by the time we come back next month, you'll be able to see where the cars will be.
I think if he wasn't blatantly continuing to park where he's been told repeatedly not to, it would really help us.
I will talk to, will, will this help if I do that for him, when we come back next month and discuss how it looks with the, we'll line it up, if we 50 feet off the property line, we'll line up eight cars, and if he's got enough cars, we'll line up everyone over here anyway, and we'll pull the cars back here on the side, so you get to see what it looks like, what we're talking about.
So do we want to continue the public hearing and let the applicant do that, or do we want to close, close the public hearing and reserve our decision?
One of the things that you had mentioned, that you were trying to look at the DMV records, and the photograph that you found was maybe one or two cars for sale, I don't remember...
That's an aerial photograph that Pam found.
Correct. And, I mean, I have long passed the site, and I have never seen 16 cars for sale, I mean, or, or whatever, parked in that general area. I may have seen cars for repair up there. So why are you looking for 16 cars for sale, or, or parking lot for 16 cars for sale at this point?
Well, we feel that a fair number, I think I just mentioned, that we believe a fair number would be one car sale per, per month at the site prior to this applicant, as an average. So with 10 or 11-foot cars over a year, we feel a 50% increase on that would get us to 16.
Yeah, but again, you're putting, you're going to have 16 cars for sale every month.
Up to.
Well, I mean, if you have the spots, I mean, you're going to put it up there anywhere.
Well, he doesn't have the cars, I'm not going to fill it up, so I mean, it's, he doesn't...
So again, we, at two, maybe two meetings ago, whatever, last meeting, whenever you were here, we specifically said to the applicant, give, we're, we're having difficulty with what he was originally proposing, so we said, come back with something a little bit more reasonable, and see what it is that, let's see what it thinks. I do have a, just because it's been so long, I do have the old historic aerial that Pam was, and the planning department was able to find for us. So again, it all demonstrates just the two cars in the backyard there. And then there's a more recent aerial that shows no, no sales, no area even for the sales in the front, but it does show cars lining both sides of the driveway, practically to the entrance.
And a lot of those cars that were sitting out there all those years ago, may have been cars to be repaired, or may be cars that he sold, so there's no way to...
So, because, because in essence, you prefer a display area, you are, you're trying to tell us that he was selling for 16, that with, if that's a 50% increase, and he was really selling not, he, you're, he might be sold 12 a year, but he wasn't displaying 12 at any given time.
Well, in his way, maybe he was more word of mouth than this current applicant, I can't explain that one.
See, I mean, you know, being fair, you know, my memory would not be the one, the old one, I'm not sure when that was taken, we don't have, I don't, we have any idea when that was taken. It's certainly the business effort, and it was big at our time, and in my memory, going back, you know, 10 years or whatever, 12 years here, to, when was that moved, 1989, there was quite often, not the front, not on the right-hand side of the driveway, if the left-hand side, I would recall, that many cars being lined up on Klaus Garage. Remember, most of them were...
There's an aerial that I found.
That's what we're looking at.
Was it the same, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, that's, now that's, I think it's, was it 2004?
This is 2004.
Okay, yeah, so that was...
I certainly remember that, on the left-hand side, quite often on Klaus Garage. Again, it wasn't clear that, you know, I don't ever recall him having for sale some of the cars. Customers want some sold, we sell them on consignment, we heat them up.
We're not planning on putting a used car sale sign up, or cars for sale sign up?
This must be that, that's different. This is like 1970 something.
No, because it's got Ray's very rich on there.
But it wasn't there, it was like, it's just showing it now.
It's still built, okay.
Yeah, it's just showing there. I'm just trying to come up with a date on this original historic aerial.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But again, it was pulled so long ago that...
I mean, just one thing that's grappling in my mind, how do we define it? If we accept that Klaus Garage sold one per month, you have 16, how do you possibly regulate?
But had it be one a month, it's fine, but it wasn't displaying.
Yeah, I got, I can...
10, 12, whatever it was, to increase by the 50%.
Well, we're not sure how many of those cars he had lined up were for sale or not.
I, I don't doubt that, and again, the aerials, you're going to clean up the area, it's going to look a lot nicer. I mean, I appreciate the, you know, attention that you're going to give to the property now, so that it becomes a much more visibly, you know, nice looking site.
Yes.
So that in and of itself has value. The dilemma is that, the next business that then comes in and says, but you gave Klaus Garage more than a 50% expansion?
Well, we're saying it's a 50% expansion, or that's not what we're 50%...
I'm not sure I can agree with that, because I'm not sure, you can show me that, or, I can agree that you were displaying the 12 cars at any one given time.
Let me ask my question in a different way. If you have 10 cars lined up, that are obviously for sale, because they're lined up in that manner, how many sale up a year would that result in if you keep that 10-car space filled? Is it going to be one and a half average per month, which would be a 50% increase, or you're going to be two or three per month? That's the question I have in my mind. How many slots did you need available for a 50% expansion? So, and I don't know how, I don't think you can answer that question. So, that's what's going through my mind, is that's what I'm asking, and I'm not sure that that really can be regulated or anything. How do we fix that? I mean, so, if we look at it from the point of view, that all, if he had cars lined up to 50 feet within the proper line of that, going back to where it was, how many cars were there? Were there five cars, and so if we allow 50% expansion, we give you seven or eight parking spots? Is that a 50% expansion of the area? Is that what we're looking at? So, again, I'm not quite sure what, so even if we grant the 50%, that's the way the decision goes, how are we going to define what you're entitled to? I guess it's part of what's facing me as, as sitting here on the board, and I'm not sure any of these proposed plans grant that, so we'll define that. So, just something I'm struggling through, and I don't know if you can really respond to that at all, whether you want to put it over for a month, so you can try to respond to it after speaking.
I think it's true, they should talk about numbers versus area, right?
Yeah, that's a problem I would define.
The area where he sold cars, we, could have been his whole property, or could have been half his property, or one-tenth of his property, or one-twentieth of his property. So we looked at it, well, what's another way to look at it? So that's why we came up with the numbers versus the area. We figured if he sold one car a month, then we should be able to have an area, a 50% increase would be 16 cars. Area-wise, I don't know how I could prove that or delineate that.
On average, how long, and again, you're not going to be able to answer this, but it's something to find the information from, on average, how long is a car displayed before it's sold?
At Dave's right now?
Mm-hmm.
My guess is probably...
I'm not asking you to answer now, I'm just saying, that information...
Okay, my guess is maybe a month.
Now, I mean to tell you, based on the, just looking at this old aerial, the 2004 aerial, there, it appears that there are 20 cars going up the right side of the driveway, and there are 30 going up the left side, but that wraps around the back. So... there are 30 going up the left side, but that wraps around the back. So that's 50 cars on this site. There's no way he was just working on 50 cars at any one given time. So, I'm not disputing the fact that he's probably was conducting his car sales while the cars were there. Customer comes in, you know, they're thinking of selling their car, "Dave, can you..." Not "Dave," okay, the previous owner, "Can you sell the car for me?"
Right.
Okay. So, I mean, I think it's pretty clear, based on just the count of cars, that, I don't know, that it was more, probably, like, it's fair to say there was more than just repairs going on, because there's no way you're going to repair 50 cars at any one given time. So, all right, I'm going to suggest this. Let's have Dave line up the eight, row of eight cars at the 50 feet back, so that we will all have an opportunity, if you can let Pam know when it's that, when it is in that configuration, so we can all make it a point to drive by and, you know, some of us just don't drive by that part of town on a regular basis. So, if you can let Pam know, and we'll all make it a point between now and the next meeting, is that understood? Everybody will make a point to drive by Klaus' garage after we hear that the cars are put back there?
Sure.
All right? And then, let's see what the visually looks like.
Do we know when this one was taken?
That's the one, that's probably a more recent aerial, because this is, this is the one that you gave us last month, where you were actually marking the location, the buffer in use by, for all the other neighboring properties.
Yeah, that's all the properties along Route 52. It shows approximate distances from the parking areas to the property line.
Because again, we had asked, how far are the other properties in this area?
Point though, how many cars are on the right side of the driveway there?
On the left, on the right side?
Right side.
Right side? None on that actually.
Yeah, that's what, and that's what I remember here, going back. So, I don't know. I don't know why all of a sudden that's all filled up.
So, in addition to what Norma just said about having the cars lined up at the 50-foot mark, I'd like to see both rows of cars, or at least have some in the back, to see if they're visible with the other cars in the front, right?
I don't know if he's got that many.
He might not have 16 cars in it.
No, I don't need to see...
Oh, I think that's true. He can...
But some in the front, some in the back, lined up, just to sort of see what the visual appeal is as you drive past.
We'll do that.
All right. I think that's the best we can do at this point. And then, I think we have to just revisit the other, the previous record of this, to just get back on the, you know, the information about the interpretation for you about car sales and other...
We may not have counsel here tonight, so...
Right. Yes. So do I have a...
Oh, is there, who's the public hearing?
Oh, sorry, this is a public hearing, thank you. So, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Klaus Garage, requesting an expansion of a non-conforming use and interpretation of automobile service facility and used car sales, as well as a variance to the 100-foot buffer on Route 52? All right, so seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn to November?
Soon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Item number two is Appeal 3920 Florries Corp., Florries Corp., 1563 Route 82, Hopewell Junction is requesting to amend their special use permit in order to allow 24-hour operation of their gasoline filling station pursuant to Section 194-85 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
Soon.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we opened up the public hearing last month, heard from some of the neighbors, particularly the ones closer by. We got some letters in the mail from people a little bit further away, who were all very much in support of allowing greater hours, or longer hours, and 24 hours. But we did hear from, some concerns from the neighbors, particularly lighting.
Yes.
And so we did ask you guys to go out. Brian, I believe you met with Michelle, our town planner, on-site, to be able to get a sense of really what the, what's going on there. And the report that came back to me was, the glare is, the light is really tremendous out there. Oh, see, we were just announcing Rocco's entrance. Look at that.
Thank you.
Did you hear that outside the building?
I did.
All right, we're good.
That was coming, and you still can't hear it.
Okay. So, one of the things that Michelle was concerned about is, in fact, if you're standing across the street, the light is so bright that it actually, the glare actually would prevent you, if you're driving on the street, from seeing people who might be walking on the street. It is that bright. It might, it might in fact be impacting the ability for your security cameras to be of any value, because there's so much light on the site. And so, I think, you know, your explanation, if you don't mind, go into what you think we should do from here.
Sure.
So, we met on-site, I believe it was in the middle of October. It was about 8:00 to 9:00 at the beginning of the night, so it was a nice black sky. We did light measurements around the property, specifically looking at the canopy and the fueling island. On the outer edges, you're about 12 to 15. On the edge of the canopy, as you work your way closer to the center, you're like 30, 32. So, yes, the intensity of the light is, is high. As we walked further toward the property line, toward Route 82, the light level drops off dramatically. So at the property line, when you stand on the property line at the entrance, you're actually 0.0. So, and we actually walked up and down Route 82, and again, we're reading light readings, readings of 0.0. Near the gas, the diesel pump, we're about 2, 2.1. So, it's amazing how far it just drops off as you walk away. But the intensity of the light, especially near the center, is, is really what draws the eye. The other thing too is, this is not like the gas station in town, where we have a lot of other commercial businesses, lighting along the road, where you have cast over. So you have about, you have a black backdrop. It's because there's no other commercial businesses in town. So that's where you're getting that focus of, of light. In talking to the applicant's electrician, and the applicant, and also Michelle, one on-site, she's done a lot of work in Westchester gas stations for residential properties. The rule of thumb that she kind of threw at me was, hey, let's try to keep it around 10 or below across the entire fueling island. So, working into, speaking to the applicant and the applicant's electrician, the lights that are there now are a little bit altered, they're not dimmable. So what you'd have to do is go in, retrofit, put new lights in that are controllable. And in the center section, we may have to put some additional diffusers on them, so we can get 10 or less across the board. And I think, I think by doing that, and Michelle's experiences with gas stations in Westchester County, I think we can take that intensity away from the site. We also looked at the building amount of signs. I know one of the homeowners brought up the fact that there's two large logo signs in front of the building that he referenced. We took the light meter over to that area, we're, we're between two, three, I don't think we got about four in that general area. But I think because he sits up higher, he can see it from his house. He's got to be 25, 30 feet higher, looking down. So, some of the letter, sorry it was late. But we have talked to the applicant, he's going to turn those off at night. We might see the cameras at 11 and 5, so we can get that, that glare, that additional glare off, off the table for him, so we can get some, get some mitigation going for him. Other than that, I think...
And did you actually have a conversation or meet with that property owner?
Yeah, what I did is, met Michelle, came up with a game plan, talked to Gable Kent, gave him the understanding of what we need to do, took that information and the mitigation that we had proposed, spoke to the neighbor, his name is Nick Uster, he crossed the street. He was the one that was more vocal. He was very, very well receptive to it. He welcomed any kind of change. And I told him, I think, I think by taking that to that light level that's 10, it's going to reduce his, his impact greatly. And I actually told him, I said, "If you go over to the station at night, if you stand near the right parking area, you're about 6, 8, 10 in that area, that's what that level would be," to kind of get a little bit of comparison of what he could be looking at. I didn't have a chance to talk to the neighbor next door and knock on the door, he was at home, but I asked if information could be exchanged. And also, we had the public hearing tonight to bring him to the public for a problem.
Okay, so that was the real, the big issue, and the noise every once in a while from the Camaro or the, you know. But again, the applicant has agreed that he would limit the use of the tele, the television screens?
Yes.
Between the hours of 11 and 5?
Correct.
And what sort of deliveries?
We would shut the television screens off between 11 and 5, because there's, there's kind of the noise, well, when you, when you're fueling, they come on, and then there's chat coming out of it. So that, that we would shut off. This gentleman, Nick, both at the meeting and then when Brian spoke to him on-site, for some reason, he's drawn to these building signs, and might find us said, absolutely positively, we will shut those between 11 and 5 as well. And then, Brian, just to confirm the numbers, did you say we were at 35 underneath on the canopy?
Bringing 32, 35.
32 and 35 on the canopy, we would be bringing that down to 10. So we'd be reducing that significantly. That will take some, we're going to have to retrofit that. So basically, what we would request is if we can, if we can get our approval, subject to that happening, we would submit the, the plan to go in the file with our application, showing what we're generating there. But the, the cost on that, obviously, will be significant. So it's something that we would, you know, would have to, as a retrofit, that we would do before we opened up.
Okay.
But we would need some sort of an approval to do it, because we're talking significant money for the applicant to retrofit all that lighting and put in the dimmer switches.
But understanding that that was one of the issues that was raised, so the mitigation really would have to get done before...
Absolutely.
The extension of the hours.
Well, what I propose is that we, if you said any approval, that we would, we approve it subject to you doing the retrofits, and that that would not be spending the money doing the retro, and saying that our hour, that we would not start operating on those hours until the retrofit.
Yeah, that's what I just said.
I think you're saying the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just, one more point I've measured up quietly. I understand that the owner has agreed to no deliveries between 11 and 5 as well.
That's correct.
Having trucks back up on B B B.
That's right.
Now, I was just trying to figure out, when you go to the gas station and you're gassing, putting gas in the car, and then television comes on, the noise is so miniscule, would it really affect the neighbors 30 feet away? I mean, I'm just wondering.
That noise at the gas station is going to be magnified at night, because there's no other cars driving by. It's really silent out there. And those, some of those screens can be really loud.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think the noise is miniscule either. I think it can be pretty significant.
I thought the name is Juan. Okay. I was just trying to figure out, because, okay, I mean...
I've had ones that, okay, I can hear it. And I've had others, ooh, what happened?
Sometimes we turn it off, it comes out.
So it varies from function, though.
No, listen, that's something that the applicant is really offering. So, you know, it's not like, it's, if it was something that we felt very strongly that we needed or something, we would, we would ask for them to consider it. But that's one that, you know...
That's not a major item.
They, they feel very comfortable.
Back in the day, we didn't have a reason to gas.
We didn't need entertainment to be entertained all the time, right?
Exactly right. So, so basically, so it would be an automatic system, or it would be manual?
No, we were going to set all this stuff up on an automatic system, because we didn't want to have a night maybe where, you know, for example, the sign on the front of the building that is concerning the neighbor, you know, we don't want somebody to forget one night, or we've got somebody nearby working there, or whatever. So we've talked to the, to the person who, who does that work for us, and they said that this stuff will all be automatic timers, nothing needs to, so that there's no, can be no human error built into it.
So the automatic system would be for the sign, as well as for the entertainment on the, at the gas pump?
Correct.
What else? Would there be a timer? What would the lights, would they go automatically down, or would it be...
Obviously that way.
Or would it be always that way?
They'll already be down, because we're actually going to have to switch the bulbs and some of the fixtures to bring from 35, 32 down to the 10 range.
So those are, will be constant at 10?
Constant.
And other, okay, and the sign and the entertainment would go down automatically between...
After 11 o'clock?
Between 11 and 5 in the morning?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other concern for the location?
Any other comments or questions from board members?
No.
All right, so is there anyone in the evening who wishes to speak for or against the request from Florries Corp., requesting to amend their special use permit in order to allow 24-hour operation of their gasoline filling station? Okay.
I mean, do we have something in the, you want to put the record, onto the record, the letters that we got?
We did it last time.
Oh, okay. We didn't get anything. I thought we got some.
From Brian, Brian spoke in light about his letter that we just got.
Okay.
Easier to type out.
It's part of, it's part of the...
So we don't have to read his letter.
Okay.
All right.
But I do appreciate the effort by the owner responding to listening to the neighbors.
So do I have a motion to close and reserve?
Is there, I mean, okay, so those are the issues, all the issues are being addressed?
Those were the, those were the issues that were raised by the neighbors.
Okay.
Otherwise, the only other letters we got were in support of it, so...
So I make a motion, I close and reserve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, we'll have your decision next month, okay? All right, item number three is a public hearing, Appeal 3916, Go Burcianni, Vladimir Go Burcianni, Route 569, Route 52, Stormville, is amending his request for us two-foot sideline and 73-foot front line variance for a pre-existing detached garage built in 1944, a 38-foot front line variance for a pre-existing 644 square foot dwelling, also built in 1944, and an expansion of a non-conforming structure in order to instruct an 891 square foot addition. It is, was amended from the original request of 247 square feet to the dwelling, pursuant to section, to the schedule of bulk regulations in Section 194-123 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Soon.
Second.
All in favor? Good evening. Okay, so, we had gone through your application, and then after we actually issued your approval, you came back to us at the end of the last meeting and said you think we had our numbers wrong. And so I think we need to start from the beginning, because, you know, when I actually took a look at your application, it doesn't say anything. It doesn't actually say what your request is. Your survey doesn't have any measurements on it. But, you know, the fact that it was a 644 square foot house, and you wanted to add 391 square feet for a family home, it was reasonable. It was not unreasonable. So I think that's, you know, the premise that the board operated, especially since we did make sure that you were not going to be increasing your bedroom size. Well, now you want it more than double the size of the house. And so we actually had to take a look at your building department records to see, what do you have there right now? And there's actually a conflicting set of documents for your house. Your original house was built in 1944, and it was a 386 square foot cottage. That was it. In 1976, it was amended, it was, there was an addition added on, for 392 square feet, which gets you to 778 square feet. We're confused. So I do need to start with a question. How many bedrooms are there in your home?
Right, no, it's one.
It's one bedroom, because you did mention children.
Yeah, I do have. So, you...
You do have what?
I have small children, yes. I have three children, all one.
So there's four of you living in a one-bedroom house?
Yes.
Okay. And so, as of 1976, outward record, town records show that your house is 778 square feet. However, I will admit that the assessor's record shows that your house is 644 square feet.
Yes, it is 644. The addition, I, it's in the back, it's a 350, so also the 644.
350 square foot addition on the 386 is still going to be more than 700 square feet.
Oh, it's close there, but it's not, it's not even 300.
Okay. This is what we're going to tell you, you need to do. The survey that you gave us needs measurements. We need to understand what it is and where it is. We need to understand what it is and where it is that you are proposing to put this addition. Because really, what you gave us doesn't have the information on it, okay?
Know what's gonna be in the addition.
Right, so now you're talking about a, again, doubling the size of the house, and you said to us that this was going to be a family room?
Yes, a large family room.
Okay.
But there is everything, I mean, ten sets of the plan is showing everything, the stairway and the new addition and everything.
Come on up to here, let me show you what we have. This is the plan that we got, right? This is your house?
It's not, yes.
Okay, I see no measurements. I see no, how long is this side, how long is this side? I don't see where the addition is. That's why we were so confused. We thought this was your addition.
No, no.
Because you said it was, there was a picket fence here and it was gonna be hidden by the fence. That's, that's what we based our approval last month on.
I do bring the plans from the architect, he doesn't show everything.
Pam, do you have more? Because this is all we have.
The plan from the architect.
But you see what I'm saying, we don't have any measurements at all, so I need to understand.
The plans he gave me, which we don't ask him for, he shows everything. I don't see any plans.
When did you buy this house?
Two years ago.
Two years ago? So two thousand and seventeen?
I did bring a lot of plans from the architect, actually, and he does show everything.
No, this is the same thing.
That's all I have in a.
Maybe you brought it to the building department?
Yeah, I did, I.
This is, this is not the building department?
I did bring it with you.
I have the building department.
File?
What you and I were.
So, but are there architectural plans in there?
We like, we like the eight copies of the plan.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to go back just so that you can be on the microphone. Okay, there's one set of plans. That has a date on it of May twelve, two thousand and nineteen. That, so you're now connecting your house with the garage?
Yes.
Okay, you didn't tell us that.
He was in application, probably.
I can't hear you, what?
He was in application, whatever.
Your application literally has one word answers. No, 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 no. This is your application. It does, it is, that's what I'm saying, your application doesn't explain, which is why we do a review and we try to understand what is it that you're asking for, so.
So basically, you're.
So you're adding a second story to the house, too?
No.
There's a second story now?
No, it's one.
Am I looking at the right?
It should not be update to the addition.
Okay, this is where Pam got the answer, total square footage of project, eight-hundred-and-ninety-one square feet.
So you put a dormer on, what's, what's the top level gonna be for?
It's just the space like a storage, but it's not, it's not gonna be straight walls, it's gonna be the roof.
Because you're, you're raising the back, so you have extra headroom up there, so that's gonna be a lot of storage.
The side walls is gonna be new, like three feet high, after the floor, which is gonna be the.
That's what I was trying to.
Oh, there it is, nine and twelve.
So there is a second floor, even though it's storage, but there is a second floor?
We're not calling that floor now, but in the future, maybe we could like a playroom for the kids, because there is no staircase for it now. In the future, maybe I'm gonna find for it, to the file, to do another bedroom maybe, but not everything, we'll think.
So what's the access to the second floor or the storage area right now, as you're proposing?
I think we're gonna use now the pull-down stairs.
Okay.
Not the fifth or third floor.
So there will be access to the second floor storage area via a pull-down?
It will, it will, but in future, when the kids grow up, we're planning to do another bedroom area, probably above there or above the garage. So I'm gonna do the five for it, but maybe in four, five years, not now.
What's in the storage section of the garage? Is that concrete floor and everything there?
It's a slab, I believe, just a slab and, and that's it. Behind the garage is the storage room, yes.
So basically, you're asking for a one-and-a-half story, twenty-by-forty addition?
Twenty, eighteen by four, living area.
Well, I'm going to the middle, it's showing five and five, I don't have an absolute. On the one hand, it's a little bit shorter, that might be eighteen, but on the one end, next to the house, on the center beam, it's showing five and five, that's ten. So I don't know if the other side's shorter or not.
Says the beam times two times ten.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. On the left-hand side of the plan, it's a little bit narrower because it matches the angle of the garage, that might be eighteen.
Well, the whole foundation is gonna be twenty-five by forty. But I think we'll be a patio in the front, so there's gonna be around five feet. And after five feet, I think, yeah, it's close to twenty maybe, but I think it's eighteen, forty feet.
So again, you have four people living in a one-bedroom house?
Yeah, that's why we're looking for addition, and in future, like I said, we'd like to make another bedroom somewhere, so.
Okay, but have you improved your septic? Because according to the.
The septic is a thousand gallon, I think, it's a thousand.
Okay.
Tank.
That's the tank, the septic field. The tank doesn't make too much difference how many people can use it.
Right.
It's how big the field is that it drains it. So if you, if it's designed for one person, you might have a field that's ten feet by forty feet. But if you're gonna have four people in there, then you need something that's, you know, thirty by fifty. Just speaking off the top of my head, I'm not saying I'm an engineer, but that could be a potential problem in the future. How old, are the kids, what age do they go to?
Four and two. Four years and two years old.
Oh, I thought you said you had three children.
And the baby is two months.
Is there a mom there?
Of course, we are a couple in the three, we are five.
So there's five, because I asked, are there four people living there, and you said, yes, but now there's, now we're finding out there are five people living there.
I understand.
There's five people in a one-bedroom house?
Yes.
I mean, there's nothing illegal about that, but you should be concerned about, and we, I guess to a certain extent, need to be concerned now, how you're using this space.
Right.
Because it's clearly just.
Why wouldn't you be putting in another bedroom now if you've got three children?
Well, yeah, we can, I think, we can call it for it, we can change it to.
But then you have to fix, you have to make sure your septic is sized correctly.
Okay.
So you put.
It's, it's.
Does it need to change or?
It's, I don't know, it does, you have to talk to the health department about that. And talk to your architect about that, because you have to make sure that you, I mean, you wanna make sure you're not overloading your septic there. With so many people living in the house right now, you've got probably two of them in diapers, right? So, you know, it's not, you know, like they're teenagers or anything like that. But very quickly, you're gonna have at least two of them not in diapers and it will impact your septic, so.
Yeah, because I may not wanna stick my nose where it doesn't belong, but you don't wanna spend all this money for this addition and you're limiting it, and then wake up some morning and you need a septic field. Because that, that number of people, you could be going into a problem. There's gotta be the glow your washing, all that stuff, with four little children.
Three.
Two adults, I mean, three little children and two adults, and that's, uh. Keep your mind open to that idea, it's just a friendly suggestion.
So currently, there's only a living room, bedroom and a kitchen?
Where's the bathroom?
Next to laundry room.
Okay, so off the kitchen is a laundry room and the bathroom?
Through the laundry, yeah, through the laundry you can go in the bathroom.
Through the laundry you can, that's not what this, that's what, not what these plans are showing?
Yeah, those two rooms are half marked in the back.
It's a big space to go, but there is a room.
I mean, is it a half bathroom, full bathroom? Is it a full bathroom or a half bathroom?
No, it's full.
Oh, okay, so there's a full ba, laundry room and a full bathroom?
Well, the laundry is like a tiny, um, we got a.
Not according to these plans, they're, both rooms are the same size. One has an entrance off the living room and one has an entrance off the kitchen.
No, the entrance there in the bedroom, in the bedroom.
Come on up and I'll show you what we're looking at.
They need to do a different pose as opposed to the actual.
Yeah. One bedroom, bedroom one, living room, kitchen, so there's a.
Oh, yeah, there's entrance here, from there. We had here entrance and we changed it, so that's a.
So this is what will be built with the addition? This is gonna be changed?
No, no, we're not touching this.
He already changed it.
But that's not what he's telling, that's not what he's telling us, how his house flows.
Yeah.
No, we're planning to do this here later.
You're planning to do this?
Well, I told you, right now it's here, I'll just run here.
So this entrance doesn't exist here?
Yeah, we do this, we have this here.
Okay, that's, this is the laundry room?
Yes.
And this is the bathroom?
Yes.
And is there a door between the two rooms? Yes or no? There is, yes or no?
Yes.
So I can go between these two rooms?
No, no, not right now, we're planning later. I was thinking in the future, I was asking.
So there are two separate rooms?
Right now.
Yeah, it's separate, that's very true.
Yeah, I don't know.
But he's, but you said you have to walk through one to get to the other.
In the future, no, no.
In the future?
Right now.
In the future, you're showing two separate rooms?
Yeah, no, no, right now, we have that from here, that's exactly how it shows.
It's what?
This is the plan shows, that's exactly what we have now.
This shows what you have now?
Yes.
So there are two separate rooms?
Yes.
You do not walk through one room to get into the other?
So in the future, you're gonna put the doorway in. Which one are you gonna close?
I'm gonna close this one and make a door here.
Okay, well, you should have your architect put that on to, to show that future arrangement of.
If we do this addition, yes.
But it should be part of this whole application. I mean, all the changes that you're making to the house should be in one application.
Oh, no, when we do next step, like we said, to the bedroom, then we like, we plan in this area, it's not in here, I just was thinking in my mind, so it's everything in the future, it's not.
In other words, that's way down the road, you wanna.
Yes.
Attempt this project first, I think is what you're saying.
If you're gonna, in essence, you're replacing the living room, so is this gonna become your kitchen and then this is gonna be a bedroom over here now?
Um.
Because you're now gonna have a big family room.
No, this is, we're gonna keep the ways now, but if we do another bedroom addition or something, then we'll change this. I was thinking just in the head, just, it's gonna stay like that now.
Is there gonna be a doorway between the storage area on the garage and the new addition?
Yes.
You don't have that.
No, no, not now, I mean, in the future, too.
I wonder why you wouldn't build that when you build it? Why wouldn't you make that doorway to go through the house into the garage?
I mean, it looks like it's planned for.
No, we're not gonna have it now. The door is from here.
So you're just gonna build a vacant structure here?
No, we're not gonna touch anything there, no, it's there now.
This is here now?
Yeah, that's the storage.
Wait, there's a garage? That's now, there now?
It's the garage and the storage behind the garage, yes.
This is here now?
Yes.
And it's actually split up?
Yeah, there's the storage behind it.
So the addition that you're proposing is now gonna stretch out from here and connect?
Yes.
That's, so this survey's not showing us that. That's why we said that that little box is what we thought, so what's this little?
That's, that's a concrete part, that's just a slab for the entrance to go into the house.
So.
Yeah, just like five by ten, something. I don't know why they show it anyway.
Yeah, I think honestly, we have a lot of things, listen, what I would suggest is you go back to your architect and say, listen.
Need measurements?
Yeah, this is what I gave them, please tell the board what we are, what you're proposing to do and drawing supporting it, because these are just markings, this is like proposed, this is not like actually.
Right, and it needs skill verification, the things that it says on here.
I think we have a separate survey, I think, just from the survey people, but architect have a separate.
What you submitted with your survey and what you drew on there is not consistent with the architect's plan at all.
Oh, he does show, because I think we have a separate survey.
I, I, I think we're gonna need to really fine tune exactly what you want, so you can help get what you want. Because I think we're kinda confused.
And I think I really wanna hear from your architect that your septic is sufficient for the five people who are living there. Right, I mean, at one point, you guys ask, when he comes in for a building permit, at what point would you ask if the septic is sufficient?
If he's adding a bedroom.
Yeah.
I don't know, we have to design for him.
Even if there's five people living in one.
Okay, get back there, we want that, and then we'll have to hire an engineer to design, and it also includes the watershed piece of the house, so the design would have to include that. So.
You don't mind going back to the microphone? Thank you.
Yeah, this is what I'm talking to you about, as you go ahead and, I can appreciate the fact that you wanna do this in stages. Make sure you can afford each step that you're going through. But you gotta be thinking about this property, where you're gonna end up, and can you end up where you want to be? You need to speak to your architect, whether that's an engineer as well, I don't know. But tell him what your long-term plans are and where you wanna go. For example, I mean, it doesn't make sense to me for you to say, I'm putting up a building and there's not gonna be a doorway between the garage and the building I'm putting up, even though they're touching each other. I'm gonna do it in the future. Why, why would you do that? It's gonna be so much more expensive to do it in the future than to have it framed that way to begin with. And so that then makes me think, well, what I'm thinking about is at the end of that addition that I'm putting in, I'm actually planning on maybe cutting that half and making two bedrooms that are ten by twelve. Because that way, we're not gonna go from the garage into a bedroom. Because then you need fire doors and all that kinda stuff, it'll be inconvenient. So then I start thinking about, what's your long-term plan? And then you have any issues of the watershed and septic tank size and whether you're ever gonna be able to do all this stuff that you wanna do with the property. So I'm not trying to criticize you, I appreciate you wanting to do this and do it in the stages, but I'm asking you to make sure you speak with your architect, whatever, and make it clear where you wanna end up and make sure you can actually get there with this property. You understand?
All right, so we're gonna need a survey that shows the measurements on it?
And the actual, what you're proposing for the variance. I mean, you can say, but this is what I plan to do in the future and make it as part of one application, fine. Or you wanna do it in two steps, fine. But we need something a little bit more than this, I mean, because I thought this was little, that patio was the addition.
Right, that's what we all thought, honestly, because when we asked the question, that's what you said, so that's, uh.
You have the surveyor draw it out, I think he's pretty hand-drew that, and he didn't do a very good job of it.
Okay, so anybody else? It's a public hearing.
Yeah, but.
Public hearing.
Is anybody here?
What is this one?
That's just by the.
Oh.
It's down.
Okay. So is there anyone here? So is there anyone here wishes to speak for or against the request from Vladimir Gopritchanyi, understanding that we need more information? Thirty-five sixty-nine Route Two Stormville, amending, requesting to amend his request for multiple variances for the detached garage built in nineteen forty-four and the house built in nineteen forty-four to be able to construct an eight hundred and ninety-one square foot addition. So seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing? And you're gonna have to get to your architect and get us the information. Hopefully by November twelfth or as soon as you possibly can, so we have a chance to review it.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you're, we will see you again next month, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I think you're aware that if you, the meeting after November would be January, so if you don't get it by November, then you'll have to wait till January meeting. We don't have a meeting in December.
And please amend your sign on your property, so it shows the meeting date in November. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four is Appeal three nine two six, Justice and Ryder, Zena Justice and Andrew Ryder, seven to Hommel Drive, Hopewell Junction, are requesting an eight-foot rear line variance for proposed eighteen-foot by forty-foot in-ground pool pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-five of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. So we did discuss this last month. My understanding is that you do not have like, you don't have a level lot. You really have a lot that slopes down or up in the back?
It slopes down.
Slopes down in the back, and so that's why between where your septic field is, you're really the only place you have on your lot to be, that's level enough to be able to put a pool, is this side of the house.
Correct.
Okay, so that was the real, but you have a large lot, I think I saw that your lot was one point nine eight acres?
That doesn't sound right, I think it's just one acre.
I think it's just one? I thought I saw somewhere that it was a large lot.
One point oh seven.
Oh, okay, all right. I don't know where I got that from then. But you have, it's, well, I better look to make sure I was preparing the right... All right, you have a permit for the hot tub in the back? There's a stairwell going down to a basement, is your basement finished?
Yes.
You have, there is a permit for that? It says permit, okay. So there are no violations on your property, that's good. All right, so, but I don't... So there's a lot of tree coverage on your lot?
Door, especially towards the rear.
Towards the rear, okay. I think that's what we were talking about last time around, was that...
Forty feet of tree cover before getting the area where the neighbors in the back are cleared.
Okay. So, any other comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, so is anyone here wish to speak for or against the request from Zena Justice and Andrew Ryder, seven to Hommel Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting an eight-foot rear line variance for a proposed eighteen-foot by forty-foot in-ground pool? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. This is Appeal number thirty-nine twenty-six, African engineer Justice and Andrew Ryder, requesting an eight-foot rear line variance for a proposed eighteen by forty-foot in-ground pool pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-five of the zoning ordinance. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas African is applying for above stated variance, and whereas the board moves to adopt this silent decision in order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as a pool may be located behind the house and there's an existing tree line as well as a fence between this property and the property to the rear. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the African's lot is not level and the septic fields are located on the side of the house limiting the area that will be suitable for the proposed in-ground pool. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance would not have any adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeal hereby approves above stated variance.
Sir, second? Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Now you'll deal with the building department.
Okay.
All right. Okay, next, item number five, Appeal three nine two eight, Leonardo, Todd Leonardo, one oh six Deer Lane, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a six-foot rear line variance and a twelve-foot sideline variance for an existing ten-foot by ten-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven, B three of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening.
Evening.
So we did have a opportunity to review your application last month. This is the shed that's been there for a long time.
Since you were in high school.
Since you were in high school, okay. That, it's all the way in the back corner of your property, it's under the cover of trees, so it's really not visible to any of your neighbors. And so, and actually, I do wanna know for the record that, you know, the building department, when they went out and they noted a couple of things on your property, Rick said you took care of them right away, so, so again, you're, you're making sure you're doing everything as you should. We, well, before I, we did get one letter, I do wanna read that into the record. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
And the shed is in, I mean, in essence, could you move it, or you really?
Uh, we tried to get someone to come out and look at it. The floor had rotted out and I had put a replacement floor in, so they said there's nothing really that they could do without pretty much damaging the entire shed.
Yeah, I mean, as we said earlier on, it was, it's tucked all the way in the back nicely. So, all right. Well, before I open it up for public comment, let me just read into the record this dated October seventeenth. After much consideration about this variance required concerning the two hundred and fifty feet of my property within the above-mentioned property, I'm not sure what she's trying to say here, I am against the proposal. Over the last fifty-one years, I have lived in this house, and she gives me the address of twenty-eight Julie Drive. Some people have put up sheds backing my property line, whether permits were ever obtained, I don't know, as this was not my concern. If I decide to sell my house in the future, I don't want any variance problem coming up concerning my property line or any new owner. And this is signed by Mr. Thomas Byer? Is that my signature name? Okay, at twenty-eight Julie Drive. And so when we actually pulled to see where this property owner was, this is where Mr. Leonardo's home is, and this is where the other property... So there's actually a whole row of homes in between there. She's not in, he is not in the jointing name. And Julie Drive actually is off of Lake Wall. So you're, you're, actually, you approached the house from a different side, so she wouldn't even, he wouldn't even go past your house.
I thought this was the property, this is DNA?
Yeah, that's what I'm showing you.
Yeah.
Same one. But this is the person who worked there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so...
I first...
So it's not on their property?
I first will adjourn any neighbors and just ask them if they had any problem. They had no problem writing a letter, I believe. You guys have those on file, the two that would be closest to the shed. Signs were out for the month. Haven't carried for anyone else, so...
Okay, well, they may be here, so let's, let me open it up for public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the appeal from Todd Leonardo, one oh six Deer Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a six-foot rear line and twelve-foot sideline variance for an existing ten-foot by ten-foot shed? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is Appeal number thirty-nine twenty-eight, African is Todd Leonardo. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas African is applying for the above stated variance, and whereas the board moves to adopt this silent decision in order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the shed has been there for years, at least since the African purchased the home in two thousand and eleven and has some vegetarian screening. The desired results cannot be achieved by some other means as the shed is on a concrete slab limiting its ability to be moved. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have any adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental condition. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeal hereby approves above stated variance.
Sir, second?
Sec.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so you're all set?
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Have a good night. All right, so that was the last of our public hearings, there's not gonna be any more public comment. At this point, we're just on to reviews. At the appropriate time, we'll set each of these reviews up for a public hearing. So item number six is Appeal three eight nine six, Cattrall, Gunther Cattrall, one ten Van Black Road, Hopewell Junction, is requesting a sixteen hundred square foot variance for an existing forty-foot by forty-foot detached garage pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven C of the zoning ordinance. So, good evening. So when we last met with you, one of the things we had said, you would, you essentially, you finally were able to calculate to some extent the amount of fill that was likely brought in, because we've mentioned that there was fill that was brought in, filled the floodplain, and ultimately was that impacting some of the neighbors downstream. So you were able to calculate out how much fill had been brought in. But, and that we had said, because of the floodplain issue, that we wanted you to talk with Rick. However, Rick has actually said that they need some guidance from this board before he spends any more time on this, just to make sure that... So I think this board has to deal with the bigger issue of the fact that the town code allows one detached structure that can be up to sixty percent of the footprint of your home or seven hundred and fifty square feet. And you already have that one structure that already exceeds that. And so now we are faced with the issue of whether we want to allow another very, very large structure to be able to be, continue to be on this property. We had asked last time around for a floor plan of how the property would be used. In essence, you gave us a floor plan that shows how nine cars that are currently registered to the owner could be laid out in the property. I did request that you, I don't, it exists already, it's being used now. What's in there now is what I'm asking. What's in the other garage now? So what's the layout of what's in there now? You're not gonna tell me you built it and you haven't been using it. So what's in there now, not what may likely go in there?
Cars, I got nine cars in the other one, and then I have my own equipment, you know, tractors, so the grass is snowplowed, you know, to fix the property in winter time, the old garage.
Awesome, take building for a lawn tractor, a lot.
You have an army truck? My army truck will be...
Your army truck you actually showed us is under the carport.
Yeah, for now, but once these things are cool, it's gonna go inside the garage.
Are you saying basically it's empty now?
Both of the garages are empty?
No, 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 it's not empty. I have a few cars on both garage. I have nine in the other one, and I have eight in the other garage, the old garage.
So you have seventeen cars altogether?
Yes, but some of those are just coming back home to me at Mayapack and only put my army truck inside. Now I'm gonna take over some of the cars, cause they don't fit.
So you told us when we first started, is that you were gonna move back into this property? Because you rented the property?
Yes, once I settle all this mess that I did.
But then the cars aren't gonna go back with you to Mayapack?
Well, no, well, basically, more residence, it's only ten minutes away from my, from the house.
How many families are renting the other house? The single-family house, one? There's only one family in there, it's not, you're not renting into two families?
No, no, there's five people there, uh, three kids and an husband and wife.
Okay, there's some, there was some concern about actually how many families were living there?
There's one family.
Okay. So you've got the existing structures, and they are now housing eight cars and nine cars? Or they're housing an army truck and track one material?
No, the army truck's in the back, I have my own equipment on the old garage. After the garage gets the old equipment, snowplow and sky machines and a tractor.
Because you also had told us previously that the garages in the house, you're not renting to the people who are renting the house, you're using those as well?
Only one, only one.
Okay.
Basically storage, you know, cabinets and...
I think you told us there was a car in there too.
Yeah, there is one, one car on my side, their side is basically storage.
So it's their storage? You have a car on your garage?
Yes.
You're renting the house, which rental includes one of the garage bases?
It belongs to them, yeah.
And they're, they're the ones that have the cabinets and stuff, so...
Yes.
You have a car?
One car, yes.
So now we're up to eighteen cars altogether, plus the truck. Okay, just trying to keep these numbers true.
I mean, I'm trying to keep everything inside, I lost my storage, my previous storage, but I didn't have a choice. Trying to build it and gather all the weather, but I'm insured.
Yeah, I mean, I saw the nine registrations, so it's clear that those are all current, so...
Yes, they're all current, they're all classic models, and they're ready.
I, I wouldn't know a classic car from a...
This roadrunner's...
Sorry, I didn't...
I didn't look at the registration.
I didn't pay attention to that.
There's a...
Sorry, I...
Roadrunner's in charges, you know, it's, and they're all in condition, can't keep it up, you know, outside.
Okay, so it comes down to whether, because we have, we have the issue of the floodplain impacts, the, what the work that's been done is in fact impacting neighbors. But you believe, and Rick believes, that with a floodplain development permit that you would be able to excavate out some of the fill and create enough storage on the property so we would mitigate that impact that's been occurring on other neighbors' properties?
We would mitigate both the new structure that was created out of current and the structure that was actually permitted and has a seat up. So we'd take...
And what, what about this carport? There's another structure.
Yeah, but that's, this gravel underneath, it's just anchored to the ground.
But it's another structure that's...
Are you gonna get rid of it is the question, I guess. Do you plan on, do you plan on removing the carport?
If I have to, I, I, I would, yes.
Well, you have to decide what you're asking us for, how we're gonna do this. I mean, cause I look at this now, and as you describe it, you know, on one hand, I have a lot of empathy for somebody who wants to collect cars and do that, that's a great hobby. On the other hand, I'm looking at this, you don't live there, you're renting out the house, you've created basically a storage facility on the back of your property, it's almost approaching a commercial use of it, so, and these are large steel buildings. They're not fitting so much into a residential character of that neighborhood. So, I mean, you're gonna have to perhaps address what you're going to do to help you turn that into a residential piece of property if you want us to be, start considering whether you're gonna keep two large structures up there or don't look residential. And what you're gonna do, maybe, it's up to you not to say, well, if you make me take that out, then I'll do it. That's not what we're here doing. You're coming here with an issue, what are you gonna do so that issue becomes somewhat acceptable for us so that we can give you what you want? You have to come forward, how you're gonna use that property precisely. So you have to be forthright in what you're going to do and stick to it. Because, you know, if you come forward with a plan that we can, okay, then you can get that, okay. If your plan's not okay, we're not gonna tell you why it's not okay, we're just gonna say no. So, those are my concerns, if you understand what I'm saying.
Jim got to the heart of the issue that I was raising when I asked the question, are you living there? The fact that you're not living there, you're running a business in essence, a storage facility there. I know, it's your use, you own the property, but you don't live there. So it's not a, it's, to me, it's not a residential use of that property by storing, by having the two large facilities and storing so many cars there. I get it, they're classic cars, I, I'm not disagreeing with that. But the fact that you are not living there, you're already renting the property, you know, it's, it's, you're making, you're putting in place the appearance that this is a commercial use of the property. And I, I truly have a real issue with that. So, I mean, if you told us you were moving back in, that's a very different situation. So, but you've said that you're, you know, you said you were moving back in in July, and, you know, you've told us multiple things.
This is gonna get approved, and I wasn't sure, so...
So if it's not gonna get approved, you're not gonna move back in?
No, no, I will, but right now it's convenient for me to go to work from Mayapack to the city. You know, a couple of years, I would, I would consider moving back there, with my mom, you know, closer.
So now we're up to a couple of years, not past July. I just understand, the concern that we have is that you've got a, a storage facility here. You're not truly being a good neighbor to the other people who live on the street with the appearance of these large structures by the fact that you've filled in floodplain and you've now, you're now impacting other people with water that was being, in essence, stored on your property when it needed to be. I really, I, I personally have a concern with that, but I'm one member of this board, so... But I do, I do believe, and I do know that Rick, Rick needs some guidance from this board. Now, we can't take any official action, 'cause we haven't done a public hearing or anything like that. So it could be that what we need to do, if we need to take action, is set up a public hearing, and let's hear from the neighbors. Let's hear what they have to say about this, and then from there, we make a decision.
The G. Hearing, myself and the chair, follow you in very similar concern. You've got somebody that's very capable next to you. I suggest you speak to him, come forward with a plan, listen to his advice. And he put this out for a public hearing in a month, 'cause we've gotta deal with this. We've been kicking this around for a while.
Yeah, I think...
You gotta come forward with a plan that we can really seriously consider where you're gonna have a problem.
I think that will give us, now we have some guidance. I have some feedback now from the board, where I didn't have that before. I can sit down with the app, we can go through... I think we need to take the narrative and reevaluate and rephrase what our intentions are. But then as the boards, we have a clear definition of what we're doing.
And what will be on the property going forward? If the carport's gonna stay, if it's gonna, it's not up to us. You're asking for something, what are you asking for? That's what we need to be clear on. Not, not right now. Work with your, work with Brian, and again, based on what you've heard this evening. I don't know if Mary wishes to offer anything.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm in line with, with what you've heard before. I think having these two commercial-like structures in a residential zone is problematic. And, and I agree with, with the chair that we'd like to see what's actually in them and what their uses are, and what can be done to make this more in line with the neighborhood.
Rocco, anything you want to open?
I mean, I'm not so concerned, let me rephrase that. I understand he wants to store the cars on his property. I don't have an issue with that, but I recognize what you're saying about, what, something you said about the steel structures. And I agree with you that maybe the public hearing will resolve that, whether the neighbors have any issue with that. I mean, as far as him storing the vehicles on his property, I don't have an issue with that. The question is...
Well, again, but we can't have residential property becoming, so I'm like, the law says one structure. So maybe at one point, you fill that up, and then you have to go rent the place. But you have what you have. Again, I think what I said before, I'm gonna echo again. If you have somebody capable next to you, try to come up with a plan, and see if we can, and your neighbors can accept that, okay?
Aye.
Okay, I have a, I mean, the first garage that was built in 2010 is fifty-three feet by twenty-six feet. The second in 2018 is forty by forty. And I was wondering, why do you have a gap between the two structures? Is it for drainage, or for any particular reason, or just...
It was primarily for destructibility, getting machine in there, putting the form, and then having the ability to actually construct it.
Probably had a crane in there, nothing much, yeah.
And, and one of the things that we were speaking about was possibly doing some kind of breezeway between them. So technically, they're not two, they're one structure. I don't know if that helps the situation, or it just masks it. But that was something that we discussed. We also discussed taking down the carport. I think we got a lot of activity going on back there. Anything we can do to mitigate any kind of neighborhood concerns is something that should be explored, but I didn't know how the board felt about committing to a structure, so we're not too...
That might be one of, yeah, you might wanna do that. I can't picture it right now, but maybe you'd show me something, maybe that'd be something that would make it better.
Is there electric in, in these garages?
Only the existing garage have the C.O.
Well, they're both existing.
The one with the, the old garage.
The one you have.
So there is electric in the other garage?
Yes, no, it's...
Is there any plumbing in any of these garages?
No, no, no way.
So there's no heat? There's no running water?
No.
Okay.
And maybe, I don't know what you do with these, I don't know, just screen them? Or maybe some windows or something, I don't recall, if these things look...
Oh, just take a, take a drive down. You can't miss them. And the trees are, the leaves are gonna come down soon, pretty soon you'll be able to see them through three seventy-six again. You can see them through the trees.
Again, if you're gonna be proposing, and I would suggest to update the plans so I can see the dimensions of what you're... And again, can you put the ZVA zoning plot on, on the cap itself so we know what variances we're looking at? Thank you.
Yeah, we'll put in the application, get the narrative over there. And I think with this submission, we'll go through the structures, so the board can see what we've got.
I think that would be really helpful.
Thank you.
So we're agreeing, we're not gonna set it up for a public hearing at this time. Let's get a little bit more information. We'll see you again next month, and then we'll take it from there.
Appreciate you asking, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, item number seven, the board, we have to vote on a refund to the applicant. He has withdrawn his appeal for Cronin. So do I have a motion to refund all the five dollars of his application?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that one's okay. So we are up to item number eight, appeal three nine two five, William Tow. Dave Tow of William Tow Hardware, twenty-seven Route eighty-two, Hobell Junction, is requesting a ten-foot sideline variance for a proposed building, a seven-foot variance for parking circulation, nine perc, a point nine percent variance for the floor area ratio, a three-foot height variance and a variance to the parking requirements in order to allow six parking spaces than required, all pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventeen, one ninety-four dash eighteen, one ninety-four dash three sixty-one of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Tow.
Go on here.
Okay, and he was not here last month. But had his, he gave us a heads up that he was not gonna be at the request. And our understanding from Michelle is that there really is no updated information. We had asked at the last meeting that they go and talk to the neighbor, and we don't believe any of that's been done, so...
It's also possible that they may have gone to the town, at the town hall and found the...
No, but Pam, you let all the applicants know.
Okay.
She let all the applicants know that we were meeting here.
But again, I'm not, I could just send him a letter, I have no problem with that.
Okay. All right, so we should direct the, or just send a letter to the applicant?
I would ask her to politely, to send that.
All right. So item number nine, appeal three nine two seven, Polanco, Polanco? Okay. Abelco Polanco fifteen, Penwick Drive, Hobell Junction, is requesting a thirty-six rear line variance for an existing twenty-foot, twenty-four foot by twenty-two foot carport pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ten of the zoning ordinance. So, good evening. We did have the opportunity to, this is, we agreed that this is not the building that the building permit was issued for, so that should actually come off the, the title. So, we did have a chance to talk to you last month around about this. You bought this property how long ago?
January, yeah.
Okay, so you are, you found, you discovered, I guess, as you were closing on the property, 'cause you mentioned something in some of the documents, that this issue came to your attention.
Well, we did know about the fire permits or file.
Right.
Before, not aware of anything else. But Rick did come by. We had to do a front main for his front head that was replaced.
Oh, okay.
And the next one, he wrote it to my attention.
Okay, so in essence, in nineteen ninety-eight, the original owners, or the previous owners of this property, had applied for a carport to be at, to put on the property. In essence, they closed in that property and made it a garage. So that carport no longer exists.
Well, I guess they had purchased the carport, and I'm just assuming. And after they built the garage, they decided to...
They moved the carport to the back.
Put the carport in the back of the house, since they had already purchased it.
So there is still a carport on the property?
Right.
But there's also now a garage?
Sure.
That does not have a closed-out permit?
Right.
So, that's gonna be one of the first things. But again, you didn't do any of this. You, you bought a property that has, has all these...
It appears to sold dates back to nineteen ninety-eight, from what we...
Or thereabouts, right. Is the car, what condition is the carport in? I mean, is it...
It's been great, it's...
Oh, okay, so it's some, you're, you're seeking at this point to keep it?
Correct.
Okay. So, I don't think we have any concerns really about where it is. It's stopped behind the house.
In the last meeting, we had, the survey, Adam brought, we didn't have...
Oh, that's right, there were other measurements on your property. Thank you.
And I've applied, and just received it today.
Okay.
With the measurements that you needed. I do have, you know, copies for everyone, so if you want to...
No, that's great, 'cause we did say that there were additional structures on there, that we needed some additional measurements. So if you can bring that up, that would be great, thank you. We wanted to be clear that we were gonna take care of everything on this property.
Just ten copies on there.
If there's an extra one there, please make sure we have this one. Okay, so, let's start from the left. So we have a shed that is seven point six or seven foot two feet off the property line. So that's the first issue we have to deal with. We have a shed that now needs a variance.
Right, and I was told that I was eligible for an amnesty on that, which I might need, I think, I'm not sure.
Rick, is this out, would it be eligible for amnesty?
On the shed?
Yes.
Yes?
As long as it's, okay.
But while we're doing this and just dealing with the variance, why don't we just deal with it, and then you don't have to worry about applying and paying for the fees associated with the M.S. Okay? So, it is also seventeen point nine feet from the sideline, but that now just has to be fifteen. So, she just needs the rear line variance. And in essence, you really only have seven feet. So you need the eight-foot variant, rear line variance, right, for the shed? To get to the fifteen feet?
It's seventeen point nine.
That's to the side. It's a corner lot. It's a corner lot.
Oh, yes.
But I'm looking at where the driveway is in terms of the, the location of it. So it is, it appears it's an eight-foot variance from the rear of the lot. And we have a concrete patio.
Down here is just a little block. All that sits there is a smoker, and they have that before, I would think.
Are you gonna take it up?
I'm not planning to.
Okay, so let's...
But it's com, it's not a poured concrete, it's just block that they laid in sand?
It is poured concrete.
Oh, it is poured. You don't, you don't wanna take it up.
You don't wanna have to take that up, right? I mean, it's ten foot three on one side and eleven point four on the other, so...
And I can be myself using it in the future, so, yeah.
Yeah.
And again, it's probably...
It's supposed to be ten feet away?
Patio is fifteen.
Fifteen.
Okay, so, it's three feet.
Oh, four, yeah.
All right, 'cause you gotta, we gotta round it up. So it needs a twelve-foot variance. This needs an eight. Then we get to the carport, which needs a twenty-five foot.
Right.
So we're at fifteen and fourteen, so go with the fourteen. So this needs an eleven-foot variance. And what's the garden area? Just a fenced-in area?
Small fenced-in area.
No problem.
Very small.
And the doghouse?
Doghouse, I have no intentions of keeping, it's very old, and just haven't tackled that.
Okay, so you're gonna, to be removed, can we say that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is the doghouse a permanent structure, or on the concrete, or just...
No, it's just a wooden doghouse.
I mean, again, they didn't even give us the measurements.
Very old.
And the garden area is basically just fenced area or something, with, with no...
It's just chicken wire.
Chicken wire, okay. So that can be moved?
Right.
So you have the fifty feet from the front line, you have the twenty-five feet from the sideline, so everything else looks to be as it should be.
At the last meeting, you did ask for measurements to the fence, however, the back fence is on my neighbor's property. It's not on my property.
Yeah, we can see that. It's on the neighbor's property, yeah?
Yeah, there's the neighbor, okay.
So, okay. So now we're clear what variances she needs. So there are two additional, or three additional rear line variances. She needed a th, oh, the rear line's supposed to be fifty feet for the structure, the carport, not twenty-five.
Yeah, it was still twenty-five.
'Cause we have that she needs a thirty-sixth foot. Thirty-six plus the fourteen is fifty. So, yeah.
I suppose that is the short side.
But then the house doesn't have the fifty feet, if that's the rear yard.
Right, we had a rear line variance for houses, one of the others that was needed.
And he's giving us the measurements, the house is thirty-two feet.
Thirty-two, right.
So, yeah, the house needs an eighteen-foot variance. Thank you for enlightening us of that, Mary. Okay. But the shed still only needs a fifteen, even though it's the rear line, and the patio still only needs a fifteen. Okay, so we're good on the rest of this. And again, this, this has all been here for years since before you bought the house, so...
The house was built, and it's on anyone.
Okay. Questions or comments from board members, or are we okay to schedule this for a public hearing? So, motion?
Motion, please.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Although she just bought it, she just... I've written all over mine, don't mind mine.
The numbers for the variances.
They're written on there, okay. Okay, so we will see you next month. We have a motion for the public hearing, that was approved. Pam will give you your instructions for your sign. You do have two front yards, so you're gonna need two signs.
Okay.
Okay? 'Cause you, you are on two sides, two streets.
Thank you.
Okay, item number ten, appeal three nine two nine, Clerk, Beth Clerk. Sixteenth Lane, Hobell Junction, is requesting a twenty-foot sideline variance for an existing carport and a seven-foot sideline variance for the existing house, which was built in nineteen sixty, pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven A of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations.
Eight, ten foot sideline, or a twenty foot sideline?
Twelve. What is appeal?
It's twenty, right?
It's twenty, yeah, that's what we have looked, said in the prep meeting.
Right.
So, this is the first time we're seeing your application?
Yes.
So if you don't mind taking us through... When did you purchase this house?
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen, and the carport?
Uh, the neighbors said probably late eighties, early nineties.
Okay, so you, you did not put this carport up, it's been there, the neighbors haven't objected to it. Is there any screening between the carport and your neighbor's property? Do they see it?
They, they see it, there's a line of trees between the carport. And right on the property line is a lot of trees, also.
Okay.
But there's a park on the bottom, there's a car tree on the top. So they can see it, but they're...
And is the carport in good condition?
Yeah.
So you do wish to keep it?
Yeah.
That's a current picture that you have attached?
And that issue didn't come up when I bought the house. Um, when I was getting a, given the boiler for the U.S. permit, the person who came from the town, that, that, and that's the first thing I heard.
Okay. So any comments or questions?
Anybody that's got their eyes on me, how far the shed is, you...
Yeah, the second page is blown out for five feet.
I was asking the shed in the back.
Oh, the shed.
The shed, are we looking at that?
22.4. 15.
No, sheds, no.
15, 15.
So the shed's good. But the house on the other side is 18.7. So, do we need a variance for the side yard of the house?
Yes.
Yes, I would think.
Sorry.
Yep, it's in there.
Yeah, that's the first thing I got this morning, trouble with online.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so we're set?
We've got that.
Okay.
And the front of the house is... It's probably going to be at least 50, though, that should be fine. Because if that's, little side yard there is 18.7, almost 19, it just...
Yep.
It's going to be at least 2 and 1/2 times that. Okay. Comments or questions from board members?
No, thank you.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All favor? Pam will give you your instructions for your sign, and then we will see you next month, okay? All right, item number 11, Appeal 3930, Carosa, Donato and Diana Carosa residing in 77 Holmes Drive, Caledon, Ontario, Canada, who currently own the house located at 148 Broadway, Hobble Junction, are requesting a 30-foot front line variance for an existing 16-foot by 20-foot shed, which is also located in front of the house, as this is a corner lot, pursuant to Section 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. So you are Donato?
No, I'm his brother.
Oh, okay, and do we, we do, we're good? We just have to be sure that we have the appropriate record, that you can be his representative. Okay, so, did they recently purchase this home, or they've owned it for a while, or...
They've owned it for a while, and they're selling their house, they live in Canada now.
And so, is somebody living in the house now, or the house is vacant?
It's vacant right now.
What condition is the shed in? Why do, why can't we take down the shed?
Take it down?
Yeah.
I really don't know, the shed's in great...
It's in good condition, okay. Do you know when it went up? Do you know when it was built?
About 2 years ago.
Do we have a, there's a lot of debris in the yard. Is somebody cleaning up the yard? The buildings department went and did an inspection, and there's a lot of stuff in this yard.
No, we got pictures from the weekend, from the property owner, the weekend after.
Oh, the after Rick was out there?
They cleaned it up the weekend after those pictures.
Oh, okay, all right, so somebody's been out to clean up the house. This is what Rick had taken when he went out to the site visitor's.
Does it look at that, this and... I don't know, is that fence, is that fence going down, it's pulled up?
There was a lot of debris behind the shed?
Oh, there's nothing.
Okay, I mean, the shed itself is beautiful.
Yeah, what about that?
That's the same pictures.
There's no fence.
Fence is gone.
I mean, I don't know which picture you have, so...
Okay, it's clear from this photo that the debris is gone.
No, the fence is gone.
Okay. Now you know why I was concerned.
Yeah, of course.
That was a little worrisome, but that, like I said, the shed itself is beautiful, so... It definitely, it matches the house, it's, you know, it's got a nice little window up at the top of it. So I agree, it's in very nice shape, so...
They sold the house and...
So you've got to get this cleared up so you can close?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members, otherwise?
Motion to adjourn, please.
All favor? Okay, so Pam will give you your instructions for the public hearing next month, and then we'll...
I don't know any of this process, but they're supposed to close around the 15th or 20th of November.
Our meeting is November 26th. That's the earliest we're going to be able to get you the approval for this. All right, but it will be, it's scheduled for a public hearing, you'll be able to document for them that it's been scheduled for a public hearing.
Okay, that's cool.
All right.
Let the attorney know that. Let Adam, I was thinking, let Eric know.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 12, Appeal 3931, Patel, Annville Corner, Patel. 3 West Tilden Place, Hobble Junction are requesting a 9-foot rear line variance for a proposed pergola to be placed on their existing patio pursuant to Section 194-94 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. So this is a new home built in Hobble Glen. You moved in?
Just moved in, something brought up here, it's moving nicely.
Okay, so you have moved in, because one of the things that we have a concern is, is if it's new construction, we shouldn't need to get a variance to do that, because people should know where the codes are, but you've now moved in. So my understanding is you've built a new house, you've got a beautiful patio on the back, and you'd like to be able to put a pergola to be able to kind of give your backyard a little bit more pizzazz, I guess, you know? Usable, more usable space on the patio itself that you built that in. But I think I understand, and I got to pull out your application, hold on, that you're on a corner lot?
Yeah, corner lot.
Okay, you're on a corner lot, and your backyard is very visible. So, which is why the fact that you've done a beautiful backyard is really important to us, and the fact that you're requesting the variance instead of just putting it up is also very helpful. So, again, for board members to be able to take a look at the, what they've actually designed for the back. If you'd like, there's some pictures here from Rick of what the finished patio area in the back looks like.
So you sort of want to put a pergola?
You want a little dimension to it, I agree, you know, that it's...
Yeah, but you, basically, you have walls going around your patio, you want to put posts on those 4 corners?
There's 4 P's and a post is gone.
Okay. On the corner, and I guess the bigger leg of the Y, as you come on to the left.
Or W?
Okay. Move the Y.
I'm looking at it from this angle, it's a W. Again, I think, are you putting any screening up? Are you going to put any trees?
There's going to be some trees. There's Toll Brothers, they're putting screening over the street, that's a lot of same plants. There's 5 or 6 goose and pines going through your front of the tree.
Okay, so we're going to have some, in a couple of years, there will be some screening around there?
Well, there'll be some David plants, so, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a picture of what you plan on putting up, what kind of pergola it is?
Just a standard pergola with, I think we have, did I give you the standard white pergola? We got these, or this part.
I don't think I've...
I'm not sure if you had, I think we gave it to, those 4 posts, 4 columns. Sandy cover.
Yeah.
Got a louver, got a...
It would look nice without a fence.
Yeah. You have all woods in the back, some palm trees in the back.
Is this going to have a solid roof?
No.
Okay. Or...
So, yes, no?
Motion to adjourn, please.
All favor? Aye. So you will have a public hearing next month, make sure there's no objection to corner lots, you're going to need 2 signs?
Yeah, there's nobody I can watch, I mean. Which is amazing.
Count your lucky stars, okay? But you still need the 2 signs. November 26th is the date of our meeting. Yeah, so Pam will give you your instructions for the signs, and then... All right, and we'll see you next month, then. Thank you.
My name is, so I don't understand.
Which is, what is incorrect?
My first name is A N I L, there's no V in it.
Oh, okay, all right, we'll make that correction before the letters go out.
After hyphen is K U M A R, not M O R.
Okay. Thank you. K U M A R?
Right.
An A N I L, not A V.
And there's no hyphen between, is there a hyphen? There is a hyphen.
A N I L. A N I L, K U M.
I'm getting too conflicting information, no, because she's saying there's no hyphen, and he's saying there's a hyphen.
He wrote a hyphen.
He picked on his book.
On his application, he put a hyphen. Okay? All right, and last but not least. Item number 13, Appeal 3932, Darrow, Justin Darrow, 6 New Hard Place, Hobble Junction is requesting a 12-foot sideline variance for a proposed generator pursuant to Section 194-17 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. So, again, first time we're seeing your application. Although we were recently on New Hard Place with another application. So if you don't mind just telling us, is this going to be behind the fence?
Yes.
Okay. It is hidden, we'll not be seeing, it's fenced in, that's what you've written. So you're just looking for an emergency generator, something to cover you, that will be able to cover the whole house, okay?
I'm sorry, can have natural gas, okay?
So he gives us the information on the generator? Its feature specifications? So Rick gave us some pictures of his home?
You'll never lose power once you find it.
Yeah, oh yeah, you will.
I know people put up a nice natural gas one, and then the one big storm we had was Katrina, whatever, and the fires came down on the road, over the natural gas line, and it blew out. They still lost the electricity.
So it's a 12-foot sideline variance. Why is it so far away from the house? Well, why, I guess I need to see the pictures again. Is it going to be right against the house? So the house itself?
That's what I was looking at, too.
The house is built 85, it's, well, your house is, but...
Yeah.
Part of it, developed, built in Goab, Corona, there's a road. And it was built 85, and they did a complete lot line readjustment, because they had, my neighbor and my problem was halfway through his driveway into his garage, so they took pieces from everybody's property to make it all work.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah, it was Oswald, Barger, and somebody else.
Oh, okay.
Back in, he said Tommy Barger, I don't think I know.
Richard Barger?
Richard Barger, it's Tommy Barger, just Tommy Junior and John.
Okay. So your property line, does it end with your driveway?
No, it goes to the 4 feet.
It goes a couple more feet beyond there, okay, so your house...
Is like 13.
There's also an addition. The hatch mark. On here.
Okay. But the house is, well, the addition or otherwise, but the house itself is only 15 feet from the property line instead of the 25.
And I came from going, I already got that.
You got that, Mary? Oh, got it, okay.
Okay.
That's all, but Pam? Okay, just, we'll make sure that it actually just reflects it next time, so that your neighbors know to not, that's not up for an option, that already has a variance. Okay, so then, so then we're good, so then you're just looking to put it in that space. It's very clear from the pictures that there's vegetation between you and your neighbor. You've got a fence there, so you're going to be hiding it from the front of the house.
And there's the natural gas line in there, and it would be a little...
So motion to adjourn?
Can we get the, on the record, that he already has the variance for his sideline?
We're going to ask Pam to actually put it in the next agenda, so we, if the neighbors won't be very clear that the house already has that.
Has that, just, okay, motion to adjourn?
All favor? Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Nope, nope, hold on. Pam will give you your instructions for your sign, and we'll see you next month. We have not approved the minutes?
Oh.
Okay, I wanted to wait until Rocky got here, because I believe he would like to make an amendment to the minutes.
Yes.
So if you could tell us on which page you wish to make the amendment, and then state for the record what the amendment would be, and then if you can, give it in writing to Lisa and/or Pam, and then we can upload on the minutes.
On page 12, it states, Mr. Emmetone asks Mr. Nezewat if he was in favor of having business open 24 hours. I'd like to amend that to say, what was said was, Mr. Emmetone stated to Mr. Nezewat, so you're in favor of businesses being open 24 hours.
So you're making a motion to approve the minutes with this amendment?
A motion to approve the minutes with this amendment added to it.
And there were a couple additional amendments based on my review when Mary's, Jim asked one for one correction as well. So, but otherwise, no, they were really, don't worry, they were, they were, the amendments, you do a great job, Lisa, let me repeat that once more, you really do a great job with these amendments, they were really not, they, it was nothing substantive, it was just the little nuances of the words sometimes, so...
As long as you can tell me.
Yeah, no.
Because I said a significant change, because you wrote the word significant, and what I said was insignificant. So I had a significant change.
So it's, it's important changes like that that we have to make? But there, you do a great job, not to worry.
It was a little bit of a tease, that.
Second.
So we have a motion, we have a second, all favor?
Aye.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.